Next item is old business. Discussion of the RFP for development of 11243 Main Streets. Trustee Wright asked for this to be particularly, particularly like this. Any questions or is anybody? For discussions generally, I guess.
Mostly just the concern of maybe. Sitting down with these developers as a first stage. I've received. Not a lot of positive. All times, but I think they're more. Uninformed, maybe if just too much to ask. Couple of masks and sit down and. Kind of get a feel for what. For all intents and purposes, I'm not using names, so some don't even know what happened. It's on those sheets. They're looking at it going, okay. I don't, you know, they're not. They're money developers, they're not actual.
Exactly, yeah. Maybe, yeah, very much happy to sit and meet with people. We have names going from our way, contact, look at, you can stop with them, go over the RFP with them. What we're looking for, schedule wise. Even we talked about earlier, impossibility of, you know, we can get multiple people, you know, sort of, hey, here's a. You mentioned money developer versus sort of a land developer, if we'll call it. You know, connecting people together and saying, okay. Going, talk to this person, are these people we've seen in development area? My deal begins from a technical support to the.
Because they have the ideas, I think they just don't have the.
Yeah. Experience to act with.
Do with, you know.
It's like, it means it's.
It's a big step.
Skill, right? It's just a big skill for it, so.
That's, that was.
Really happy to, yeah, meet people and.
Rather than throwing ideas, put their ideas, say. What's, what do I need to do next?
So how many people have come in? Have we had anyone approach us or talk to us about this yet?
We had a few requests, email and requests were. Happy to do it, but I think having you eventually come in and talk to us.
Okay, I think, you know, what is our desired outcome? Because I look at this as sort of like a structure and process. So what is our outcome? Our outcome is we want to get our fees, right? We want to get people interested in it. So is the structure and the process set up where it. Encourages people, I mean, maybe the unintended consequence of the. The having. I guess I think somewhat burdensome, I guess, for an initial discussion, it may dissuade people. From applying because they look at the, how, how much is required from this? So if the structure is set up where. You're not going to have an outcome or desired outcome, and the outcome is really just have inquiries, right? People come in, all right? So is there any way we can address? What the structure looks like and make it more inviting, more appealing to people as opposed to maybe a short form. Form or something before we get.
I mean, that was RFQ versus RFP, we had a whole long discussion about that, but at this point, we got out there, yeah, I mean, I think besides just getting. Getting that information out to them that we are willing to set up and we can, when we can post additional information that we're willing to meet with people and talk about it. I think that it's not as. Firmsome, I think, as, I think people are thinking, but yeah, it's a lot of pages and if you're not familiar with the terms, you're not familiar with the process. I think if you're not a developer, right? If you're maybe just a builder, if you're, you know, somebody else coming into it, you may not be familiar with it. You know, we're not requiring the full plans, we're not requiring, I think making sure people know that, right? When you talk to them, we're not requiring architectural plans or you hire all your consultants or all your. Develop all your planning for it, right? We're just asking for you come in and pretty much what you're, what you're saying, right? To come in and show us what's your concept, what's your idea for this, what's your.
Would it be a change to an RPU then? I mean, I mean. That to me. Probably would be. Sort of not really getting inquiries or feedback where we're seeing, as I said. You know, people are not willing to.
I think maybe it's pointing out, maybe it's, we'll try to, you know, figure out some more networks, we just, it got released last. Week or a little, yeah, but last, last week too, the APA has a development website. I think we, you know, sort of pushed with some of the other regional partners here, gave out to them, the building groups, the trades groups, I think that's. I think at least let's get a little, like a shot to see if people are, if we get responses to it, if we don't, then. Then we can, then we move on, try to tell me differently. It's around, you know, I had, where it's selling it or. But I think, yeah, I think we can get it out there and people are just doing it.
Yeah, you can just get like updates as to, you know, you know, specifics.
What we get.
Let me just, you know, what the.
Yep.
What the number of suppliers are, if there's zero, we want to know that, you know, and. You know, I guess my question is, do we have to wait for the full process to change it to an RPU or we?
I think at this point, it's probably fair to anybody who's out there trying to do it, that we would probably need that.
Go through because of what another month and a half.
May.
May.
So. On a May deadline.
So I would have made that fine potentially.
And the special, what do you want us to see? I mean, you make a good point, what do you want us to see the outcome of this, right? What do you, what do you want the outcome to be, right?
The outcome right now is we want to have proposals, right? We want to have inquiries, we want to have interest, right? We want to make it, so that's really the outcome.
I think that's what is in here, so I think maybe it's, yeah, it's sending them our way, you know, have them come and talk, or they might come and talk to, to us directly. But I think that's, I think that's just encouraging people, if you do have people who are interested in it, you know, have, I guess, the money developers, right? Have them come talk to us, we'll go over the, the process of it. When I say it's really not. Really, it's, it's looking for site plans, looking for, give us your, your history background, you know, how you can do this project, what your plans are for a project there. So you guys, you, the board, can decide what you want to do, but.
So in essence, do they have to have everything completed before?
No, not at all.
So I mean, maybe that's the message we need to, I mean, you know, like, we want to have, you know, we want to make sure that they. Are not persuaded by the process, maybe it's too over, however, because that's messaging that this is. You know, fluid process, so you got initial discussions, that would be helpful.
I agree.
So those individuals who expressed an interest, invite them to make an appointment. And sit down and clarify. What would be necessary apart from all of that in the pages to present a concept. To the board. And we can go from there and any questions that they have, but it's a beginning. And if this doesn't work out, we don't give up after the May deadline, can be going out and doing the alternative. Okay, so we have a plan.
I'll reach out.
Next item is, item number three is a special subdivision invitation signs for the entrance of the Chippewa Ridge subdivision. And this is trustee Buck requested that this be. Discussed by the board, so I will. Turn over to him to sort of lead that discussion. I don't want that in here.
Well, we budgeted for it for. I don't know how many years.
How many?
Decades.
I'd like to suggest, just to move this off. Off the dime, so to speak, one to representatives from Chippewa Ridge and so and. Trustee Alak Bota. Can the two of you confer and make a decision or talk to your neighbors and decide first. Where you would like said sign to go, what would be best place? And then secondly, confer and get a consensus with some of the neighbors who've expressed to you a desire, what they would like it to look like. Give us kind of a template or a design, give us something to, to work with and get your community involved, your neighbors involved. Is that something that you could work on?
Yeah, I would say so. I know we. All in the past, when Scott was here, he had talked to both of us, at least. Where each of the signs were before and we were both okay with having the signs there again, so. I can see.
We don't see the same offices are still in that. Yeah, should look at the face for the size of stuff.
Yeah.
Are they, okay, and then just this idea of what you'd like it to look like, I'm sure there are all kinds of examples on the internet and we had set aside, what? 10,000, 5,000, 10,000, I don't know, whatever.
Five, five percent.
And we've got their designs, so if you want those in the same spots, you want them in there.
So.
Yeah. And if we reach out, I reach out, let me give the contacts for them.
Do we need to?
Um, we're gonna.
Plan to access.
Probably, yeah. That's exactly what I'm saying, yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying is, we're gonna have, yeah, if you can give me who you want, who you talk to before, who you think you can talk to before. I mean, we're happy to talk to them, we can talk about getting an license or license or some sort of formal documentation. Get those out there.
So are we in on something that you would like it to look like?
I said, I've got those designs. Yeah.
You show them around and get people to look or whatever.
We add Hawk's point to that as well. Same process.
Sure.
We haven't had a sign since I lived there.
We added an extra 5,000 purchase works, that would be.
We had bought, we had, I've been there 27 years, we haven't, we haven't assigned, oh, we had buyer.
It's, we'll send you the same examples and.
Art is hidden under a tree.
You want to addition to that, you want that out, so you're talking about that same location already?
And I've got permission, got permission from the other entrance as well, woman puts on the corner, be more than happy to have it, but I.
Our overall look though was like Crystal Hill tree. That's what.
Hills or.
I'm concerned.
Prairie Ridge, right? I think that was the general, right, that same.
The type.
Same.
The same type, right?
Trellis or.
Yeah, right. And we've got those between which. Sort of the silent guy, I think.
Charlie.
Somebody give me a time, it's. Give me a call to speak, are you checking?
Yeah.
We'll figure out.
Your.
Yeah. Talk to them.
Yeah. All right, item number four, discussion recommendation of engaging program or associates to assist with development of the village in the year 26 through 2030. Capital improvement program and updated street study for. So. This is in your packets, we have Tyler's here and so is Brandon, we were going to address this, we sort of worked through, I think we've got. It pretty well situated what we want it to look like, we have had discussion back and forth on it, I don't know anywhere.
Introduce the concept to the board and.
Yeah, sure, some highlights of what we sort of, what was gonna happen, I guess, maybe doing.
Yeah, see everybody, thanks for having us here tonight. As I think we discussed in our previous proposal, our discussion in front of the board, talking about our contract as a village engineer. One of the concepts that we discussed broadly was a capital improvement program. It's a tool that many municipalities of varying sizes use for a few reasons and, and. Step back a minute, but a capital improvement program essentially raises a planning tool, you're looking out of. A horizon and in this case, we talked five years, that's pretty common in, in, in this industry to look out five years and project out your infrastructure needs. Where your dollars will be spent, obviously dollars are scarce for everybody. Having, you know, and, and working with the village board and the village staff to identify. Priorities in different infrastructure categories and try to slot those into a specific year depending on funding and where that funding might be available. The, the, the big benefit of having a document like this on file, there's, there's, there's a few benefits that come to mind, one. It does help in terms of economic development, right? If there's a developer who's looking to come to Roscoe, they can pull this document up and see where road. Improvement projects are coming or where other improvement projects might be coming, where the village is spending their dollars. It's also a transparency tool, right? Citizens can look at and see where projects are coming and, and, and what might be down the road for them. And it also just allows municipalities a better chance to leverage their funds, right? As, as grant opportunities come up and funding opportunities come up, you have, you know, kind of a rolodex of projects now that you can kind of look at and select and, and perhaps. Opportunity pops in the next year that we didn't know existed and maybe you could, you know, reach three years in the future and pluck a project from that year and bring it forward and advance it. Up first, so with discussions with. Eric Gusserson and Instagram, like it's kind of boiled down, I believe you have our proposal in terms of just some broad categories. That, you know, some of these infrastructure improvements could be slotted into, by no means is that an exhaustive list or file list. It's sometimes nice to just kind of organize, so as, especially as citizens or other. Residents might look through, they can kind of follow it and see where dollars are being spent. And another thing to note is, this is a very collaborative process. Included in our proposal is, you know, a couple of presentations here and meetings in front of the board, several meetings with village staff to obtain feedback. And so it's really a collaborative process to figure out what the priorities are and last thing I'll, I'll point out and then I'll. Try to, I'll finally, is part of this proposal as well is an updated, what we call a street study. That last was done, Brandon, 2014, 2014. That's essentially. Driving all the roads in the village, updating their condition, you know, what signs of failure we're seeing. What types of cross section, the road has in terms of, does it have sidewalks, does it have curbs, does it have ditches, drainage problems? And then we can kind of create maps that show metrics on a, a, a sliding scale of where roads rate. So what's nice to do sometimes is color code those, makes it very easy to digest the data. Maybe red being bad, green being good and gives you an idea just of what your overall infrastructure looks like and can kind of guide the decisions on what projects might be selected, so. Gives you kind of a brief overview of what we have included in our services and this proposal. Thank you.
That's great, sure. When we sat down, we tried to identify categories and it was a learning curve for me, usually when I think of capital improvements, it's just, you know, roads. But Brandon had a laundry list, as did Troy, as. What categories there are, so for example, culverts and bridges and parks, so could you just kind of run down the list? And if we've forgotten anything, please send Brandon.
Yeah, so as of right now, again, as Tyler said, this is our starting list, I'm sure as we get into this planning process, more general categories may come up, but where we're starting. Will be roadways. Bridges, structures and culverts, so blocked culverts, things like that. Pedestrian improvements, which would be sidewalks and pedestrian paths, multi-use paths. Safety improvements, which can be signage, lighting, pavement markings. Traffic calming devices, things like that. Drainage improvements, which will probably come into the roadways or be tied into the roadways, but if we have any, you know, creek projects that need to get done, that could fall under that. Maintenance projects, that's again, that's going to be tied to the street study, but can also include crack sealing, inlet or catch basin repairs. Ditch grading. Many different things. Parks, that I know that's going to be a big one, that's one that actually this board has talked about, is developing a master plan for parks, so if you guys have ideas, please feel free to. Email me and we can, we can look at those projects and establish. Estimates of cost for those and recommendations. We'll also have public buildings. Municipal parking lots and then capital purchases, but you know, softwares, vehicles, things like that. Now, some of those, we're not going to get extremely detailed in the cost estimation, right? Obviously roadway projects, bridge projects, safety projects, you know, we can be very detailed with that, some of the, you know, software purchases, right? That's just going to be, we, we just want to get everything on a list essentially to know what we're going after. Some of that pricing can come during budget time and we're reaching out for, reaching out for full circle proposals to help fine tune that, but. Yeah, as Carol said, as Tyler said, the overall, you know, goal is to just establish project priorities for the village and helps us to, it essentially gives us a roadmap on what funding sources we can go after. What funding sources we currently have, which projects we can fund, you know, which ones we need to see additional funding for, so.
Another, another main thing that's a part of this too, we get that point, we want to be ranking it, so that would be a big part of trustees every year going through and giving rankings, right? So that helps staff figure out what your priorities are as we go through, right? That's how you set the policy for the village, the board, for the staff. So we'll have a system in there where you will be able to rank, here's what these items all are, that will sort of help drive our, our plan for the five years or help drive our just general. How we operate the village as well. And one more thing to see what this too is, is that we're maybe getting, as I collect this data, so going to our GIS system, so we haven't really used winches very much. Just directly village related data, so that will also be calculated into winches, so residents, the village staff, developers come in, whoever. Will be able to pull up roads, here's road conditions and you'll be able to see here's what road conditions look like all throughout the village. Stormwater, all of any other village infrastructure that we have. So this will be sort of kick that process off, so we can start using that a little more to help track all that, make sure we're having, oh, I mean, I have, I have made it.
We'll just be keeping it in like base for some, it'll be just one giant report at the end and what, what's the timeline for that?
So I know Tyler put together a timeline, it's definitely going to be segmented, you know, we're going to pull some data, meet with staff, review things, we'll come back to the board. Present what we've gotten at that point, try to get some feedback, we'll go back to the drawing board, update some of our documents. I think we planned on, was it two, maybe four, after four?
One of each capital improvement plan by, I think, we talked about, you know, August, November.
Yeah, before we start the budget time, the goal will be have an approved. Present in front of you and hopefully approved CIP that we then can use for the future budgeting.
So you guys could be, it's almost all new information, are you going to be using, harvesting data that's already out there?
So some of the data we already have, like, for instance, we did the street study back in 2014, a majority of that data we will be reusing. The pavement conditions obviously need to be updated, so we will be updating that. But, you know, it'll be a lot of me and Troy, honestly, gathering some of that data to then give to the Fair Graham team so that they can handle that. But, yeah, there's going to be staff involvement and gathering.
For the road stuff, but then you, this board will be a lot of it too, right? This board is going to have the ones to say, okay, I want to do park projects, I want to do, you know, shelter houses or. You know, developing of parks, recreation paths, all those, that's what this board figured into. So it'll be, there's an actual technical infrastructure portions at Fair Graham will sort of leave that and they'll also lead these discussions, but then really a lot of it's going to be driven by the board.
So we'll use all of the past projects that have been illustrative for the, you know, the budget cycles that never got completed, we'll obviously have that list, but yes, if you guys have any project ideas, please. Obviously, the more detailed, the better, that helps us refine our cost estimates and things like that, but if you just have a pie in the sky idea and you think it may need to be included in the plan. Please email me and I will forward that to the Fair Graham team and we can start including those.
It can be something as aspirational as having a bike path. Blinking the west side and east side.
I'll start with just having a defined border of our village that's accessible for people, they know where they live, where the, where the. Where we have annexed things, where we're, we're not annexed.
We're working on an updated zoning map right now, actually.
Would be, and actually not just having it, but having it somewhere where we can see, you can't see that on winches, you can't see, you know, people.
We'll post that on the village website, we'll print updated copies for the village hall, for now, public works, yeah, so, so we're working on that right now, we're going through all the old annexations to, to update that.
Are you going to include images in the road section?
Probably at least some, I know typically we at least show pictures and this was in the last street study of the different types of pavement failures, just the common ones. So we'll absolutely have that, we'll have some graphics, again, as Tyler stated, the roadways, we're, you know, we'll color code based on the pavement condition rating. That way it's very easily, you know, digestible to the general public and may not be in this industry. I'm trying to think of some of the graphics.
I think that's good, the imagery of showing the different. You know, cracks or whatever, what, what this classification is versus that classification is, so we know looking at your data, this road's in this class, you know.
Yeah, the idea, kind of like the final deliverable, right, is very like visually based, like digestible document, right, that.
Those people are the public, yes, correct.
Add just all numbers, because.
Right. Right, exactly. People, most people that go to try to find information like this are visually based, right? They're going to love to see that. Color and everything and so, and I know one of the things we talked about too was definitely highlighting in this document, I, I think it's always important like to include. In this CIP is just like kind of snapshot of the village, like, yeah, how many miles of roads do you maintain and, you know, yeah, what are your boundaries and it kind of, you know. Puts it out to everybody that, yeah, there's a lot of needs in, you know.
Yeah, a lot of people don't know they're in the village. County, so like county, where, where they're at, that's part of the educational process and also.
Part of the graphics, I'd like to borrow various communities, you might look at the city of Rockford's. Plan and there, there are all kinds of illustrations that I suggested to Tyler that we might be able to, to copy or use. And one is identifying tourists, a map, the village, or like we are, and roads and all that kind of stuff. But take a look at the type of illustrations that are there, it can be as many as you want or as few and. It's a nice piece, so these plans are all over the place, some very, very broad, some very simplified.
Troy, we have like 62 miles of road. Somewhere in there.
Probably more than that. It's 66 and that doesn't include Denali Heights, Hawk's Point, some of the newer subdivisions, so, yeah, 66, I believe.
I just have a question, was. Wasn't that street study updated when? We went out for the road referendum?
So we did. We didn't fully update it, no, no roads were actually driven with updated, we haven't actually have a, called a pavement condition rating form that. It's numerical based, it uses formulas, that was not done, what, what we did to just establish some sort of standard or update. Was I went out and I, I guess I should say, I drove a few roads. And what I did is I compared the pavement condition rating for 2014 and we did this in 2019.
Yes.
And I put a numerical number, so say that the road had dropped 10 points, right, over the period of five years, that's an average of two points per year. I then applied that to all of the other roads. Obviously, that is not a great way of doing things, right? Heavier travel, more heavily traveled roadways are going to deteriorate more quickly. Roads with drainage issues and ponding on the roads are going to deteriorate more quickly, so that was not a true. It was, it wasn't a true update, it, it got us roughly in the range, I would say, but we haven't done a full comprehensive update. That takes quite a bit of time and quite a bit of manpower, you know, go out, drive the roads, walk the roads and. Collect all that data.
I might add, the intended purpose of that at the time was to demonstrate that we had so many means and so little money, so it didn't matter where you threw the dart, we needed dollars to repair something. Whereas now this plan. This deliverable will give you the opportunity to establish priorities and make a decision what you want to do in the first year, second year. What another board will have to do in the fifth and sixth year.
Motion to. Under the board, a recommendation to a training agreement diagram for a capital improvement program and update street.
So move. Second.
Motion of trustee Buck, second by trustee Wright.
Simon?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Alco?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Number, oh, thank you. Item number five is discussion recommendation of RFP for design services related to the porta park phase two expansion outside grants. That's in senior packet. I have a proposal for design services to design and sort of oversee the construction of the phase two for the porta park expansion. Just site work needs. So that's in your packet, it's. Service standard. Services to design the park, based on the, the grant we received, so you've got that in your packet, if there's any questions. They'll be asked. But really it's just in the firm to actually give you the sign of the park. This is going to be a RFP because it's a grant, so we have to show that we're going out for very vocal positions. This is gonna be a RFP because it's a grant, we have to show that we're going out for very vocal positions.
What was the seventh?
Fourth, second, what was the exact date?
Um, it'll be by the end of next May. That's one.
Is that to spend it or have it completed, just so?
Uh, let's have the, have the portions there, the grant portions completed, some of these, some of the project action will be fully grant. Funded by just to have the grant portions, so. Um, yeah, well, the generally, the, the only issue I think is gonna be interesting will be the bridge. That portion, I think was always maybe a, a stretch, but uh, most of the other parts where we have sort of set out there. We just need to get those sort of design put in place or clean up designs. But yeah, the rest, I think most of it we've got pretty well sort of figured out, so it's just having someone officially. Go through it, get those parts on there and then.
We're just looking for like that pedestrian bridge over there.
That's gonna be the issue, that's always gonna be the issue, but I think even. If I, we'll, we'll see if that's how doable that is with the way that's there, but that is the uh. So we'll have this. So we have that portion.
That's gonna be a longer process.
Yeah, that, that was always a, a process that. That be hot, if it's ever, if it's allowed, yeah. So we'll work with all those. The, the rest of it is very doable.
You love to try.
Um. You have any questions, otherwise.
Teddy?
You can send to the board, um, roll call please.
Simon?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Malco?
Yes.
Block?
Yes.
Next item is something else, next item is. Discussion recommendation to approve a two-year contract with Exxon Enterprises Inc. in amount of six thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Uh, I guess every chief from can address it, um, if you'd like, but this is.
Sure, uh, so we have, uh, we, we currently have one, um, one officer. Will be gradu- graduated from the academy next week, um, in order to stay compliant with the bodyboard camera act and the safety act. We need to give them a bodyboard camera and a taser and a license and a, and pay for the storage. And this is essentially a nineteen-month contract, right, concurrent with the current contracts that we have with Exxon. So everything will expire at the same time and we go back to the negotiating table and. Do it all over again. Long short of.
Motion to send to the board.
Second.
Motion by trustee Fox and by trustee Malco's, seeing no account, Malco's, uh, roll call please.
Simon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Malco?
Yes.
Block?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Uh, item number seven is discussion recommendation of Beijing Fairgram associates to complete a phase two environmental study for. The one zero five one seven main street property purchase. This is the liberty lot, liberty engineering lot, so I'm sure about in the memo, um. This, we've done the phase one study on this, this is an environmental study, see what's, what's there. Phase one essentially looks at records, it's the history of property, looks at the records of the property. Um, answer makes determination, do we need to further. Inquiry on the, on that location. So initial sign was done, came back, there used to be a gas station there, um, public, public works type uh, building there as well. At our first way, uh, I think state, uh, facility there as well. Um, came back, there are, there were seven tanks, I had that property one point seven underground tanks. Uh, from nineteen fifty-five to approximately two thousand and nine, I think, probably no better, around that time. Um, so when they were taken out, I guess also when they were operating, environmental regulations were a little bit different than they are now. Um, even in two thousand nine when they were removed, there wasn't any requirement for soil, soil borings or. Uh, determinations that there were leaks or anything in the soil on that, um, also. The recommendation we've received based on the phase one is also that making sure there are no more tanks in there. Um, seven tanks were removed, we just wanna make sure there are no further tanks. Um, so the recommendation we've got from Fairgram's environmental division, uh. Ross, right, the engineer on this. Is that he does recommend that if we're gonna use it for anything other than just a surface lot, you know, undisturbed, leaving it as is. That we probably should move on to that second stage, that phase two study, we should have a proposal, um, from Fairgram. To do that involves some boring, I think six borings, I think they're gonna do, uh, some testing of the soil that comes out of there. One, case a wire sample will be doing as well. And then ground penetrating radar to see if there's any other tanks on that area. So the whole process won't take that long, it's just getting somebody out there to actually do it, um, I think the timeline is wrong in the proposal. But. It should be, you know, we should be good to go with our contractor, our contract right now, we'll try to ask for extension of that contract, just make sure. We keep that set, um, I don't think it should sell the property for being purchased at all, assuming they don't. As if they buy anything more, we'll have that discussion, uh, about what we see there. But right now, this is just that due diligence that we need to do, make sure that we're protected, um, as a, a buyer of the property that we don't like end up. You know, cleaning up ourselves or buying. Have issues down the road from them, so. Um, you have general questions, do you, anything you want to discuss?
Looks like it'll be done fifteen days.
Thirty-five days, the actual, basically the field stuff will be done in fifteen days. But then we have to send soil or samples to laboratory to be analyzed, um, I think we're. Ten days and then the final report, once we get those laboratory results back, will be ten days, so yes, total of thirty-five days. Obviously, we're gonna be working on this as fast as possible, we've already talked with Ross about this, we know the priority for the village. Um, so we will be advancing this as quickly as possible, but that's a, you know, kind of like a worst case scenario unless something else comes up.
It's really scheduling, it sounds like it's really just scheduling the contractors come out and actually do this sampling.
Very good, delay this if you'd like to first.
So, yeah, 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 I would say so. Gives us a month and two weeks, so.
So you know the gas station, they mitigated pretty well, I believe they brought in a lot of things built there. I'm not sure about, I don't know if it was a county or state yard, cause that was way, as closer to my house.
Yeah.
So I don't know what they'll find in there, that'd be obvious bigger concern. And just as FYI, there were leaks across the street, so if you guys ever think about buying that other corner. That one, you definitely don't wanna have that one done.
Yep.
That was another gas.
Well, another gas station and they had leaks, that's what shut it down.
Yep.
So that one, you'll definitely need to have that one looked at, but I believe. The twins had theirs mitigated pretty well, so unless there's a tank they missed.
Yeah.
I don't think we'll find anything there, it would be the, and I don't know if it was a state or county yard, cause it was. Way before any.
I think they found it, same as a state yard, town maybe? I guess it matters, we'll, we'll get it.
It's where the concrete pad was, cause the house. The, the gas station was in front, there was the house behind and then years and years before that, there's a concrete pad that's where it's safe.
And the reason why we also, sorry, all this, because when Troy skies, go up there to, to drill the spots for the trees every year. You guys, and you can see them out there right now, there's definitely. Rock, gravel, there's stuff underneath there, it's not just.
They brought in a lot of fills, so.
Yeah, hopefully should be, should be all set. Um. Oh yeah, I just, just wanna make sure we cover these issues with that.
Motion to submit to the board, the total was nineteen thousand one hundred dollars.
Motion by trustee Fox, second by trustee Rice. Roll call.
Teddy?
Yes.
Malco?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Block?
Yes.
Uh, I remember a special installation of laying the entrance seats on the chickory ridge park. Uh, this is something requested by trustee Fox. Interesting.
I just wanted to know if they see what the price possibly was, but I think. Still working on that.
Why don't you give it, I know it's raised from out there, why don't you just give us out there what you've done and what you've worked at? We'll be back with it, yes.
Yeah, we finally, uh, gotta hold the comment to meet us out there. On Thursday the tenth, to talk to them, cause I did have a, a price from a contractor. But just uh, direct pouring it, not pouring it on, plowing it in, putting the light, which was.
It didn't start out, but what's the process of putting lights out there? You mentioned this contract, comment and contractor, can you explain?
Yeah, well, first thing we had to, we had a contractor meet me out there, we were shorting locations. Uh, where we wanted the light, which is the end of the pavement on Appleman right there before. It turns into the gravel part to go on the back entrance of Chickory Ridge. Um, we thought we located, uh, it's, it is a comment box, but it's the wrong comment box that they have to tap into. So he gave me a quote, cause he said that they can't tap into it, we, they have to work with comment, comment says about there and then connected. But he was going to plow the wire, direct area into the ground and then. Put up the light pole, the standard issue kind of light pole that's out in Chickory. You know, metal would pull the little. Um, we found that with, uh, comments. Like two weeks after getting the quote from the contractor and. She said that that was the wrong box, that actually the. It's a smaller box on the south side of this house. Which now that goes into, we have to direct for underneath the driveway there. And then we also looked for another box on the other side of the road, anything, any other options and of course, I think it was like two. Driveways you had to go into on the other side. Um. I, I told the contractor and told him the issue and he was supposed to be giving me an updated quote, how much it would be cost. To go underneath the driveway, to bore underneath driveway, which is like another hundred and twenty feet plus the, the boring part. And comment was also giving me a quote, which they said that they. Uh, they bore everything and run the wire. Stuff too, but I have not received a quote back.
You said the pole, the pole itself from comment was like fifty-five hundred.
Well, no, the quote for the contractor with the pole and. The pole, the light and boring, or not boring, I'm sorry, plowing wire in was fifty-five hundred dollars. And I'm sure the boring, I'm not. But comment did say she thought that there was no connection fee, they just have to. Know the wattage of the light, of the LED light and then it's just like a simple, like all of our street lights, they give us like a base price of like a dawn, dusk price.
Joe has a map up just so everybody can see, that's the back entrance to the park.
She's talking back.
It's a very orlit, it's extremely dark. Right where that road appears, so that, that's where people's done dumping TVs.
So that, what's the driveway that's a born dirt, that one right there?
This second one, right?
So that, that's right, I've learned that, right from the, from the.
Right.
We did our.
There's a secondary entrance, it's all the way in the back in the neighborhood that.
Yeah, way bad.
You don't actually use, it's closed off.
So you have to rip up this driveway or is it, uh?
No, line is wearing, it's a directional drill.
Yeah, it's a drill essentially, um, mechanical drill that, hydraulic drill, um, that everything is underground, so yeah, anything above that. Um, you know, standard for electrical, um, burial is thirty, thirty inches roughly, um, thirty-six inches. So, yeah, they will be completely underneath, it's a case in conduit, uh, typing. Um, that way if we ever need to replace fire, they can easily just pull out fire and refill it there.
Would you knock on the door, are you aware of it, this potentially could happen?
Well, yeah, and so this, I mean, all of this work would be, um, done in the right way, the public right away, so, um, now we would absolutely inform them.
Form now, do they know anything about this?
I doubt, I mean, until we know for sure that we're gonna be doing it and we get, you know, get approval from the board, we probably wouldn't notify them just. You know, I, I work with a lot of the fiber optic companies and as soon as you tell some, tell a homeowner, you know, hey, this could be coming. They think it's absolutely going to be coming, we just don't wanna give them that until we know for sure.
I would like some clarification, um, how extensive? Is the problem or what is the problem at the end of this road when we have barricaded access? To the park, just what's happening there?
So residents, I, I don't know which house exactly, but probably one of the last four, they reached out to me. Um. Many years ago, cause it's been. Found the stuff books for years and years and years. Um, that dumping, like. When people are moving out of rental homes or something like that, they go back there and tell Troy, I don't know if you have to clean it up, if that's your. You know, how frequent it's actually happening.
We've had to clean up some stuff earlier, but it's actually slowed down a lot, we haven't had nothing lately. We did end up putting the barricade at the end of the pavement before the. The roadstone, that says like, you know, the road ends with the big four things. And now like, no one can actually drive past there.
Okay.
I don't know if that's. You know.
Specific on where the dumping is happening, they made it sound like it's right next to the. So if it's further into the park, I don't.
Where we've had to pick was in the gravel part, almost like, there's like a little fence and then there's like a emergency gate, big double swing gate, and then there's like a little. Where you can just walk in, right, cause some people walk in through that way, and all, all the stuff that I've found was back up against. Kind of like the fence in the back corner.
They just, they reached out, felt it was a security issue and they didn't like that it was happening, that's.
Kids used to party back in there.
Yeah, years ago, they, they still. Down by the front.
They do that front. Woods, they have a whole setup down there, maybe walk with the dunk.
Should be reporting that to you, sorry.
I, I remember talking about.
Do you literally wanna shed some light on the dumping?
And again, this. I'm something I'm saying has to happen, but I've just been trying to get a quote approved. Um, it's a full of years. And I would like for us to at least know in the future how much it's gonna cost to do.
I think also the other end of the park. Yeah.
I guess first one checked out.
And then here's the other. Other part, obviously the same thing, you're talking about the. Or the entrance there? Or would you prefer it in the back? So, I guess I, that's the.
The only thing I was worried about.
It's just the back entrance.
I just figured because we were getting price two, go ahead and check, figure out that price two, but. To me, that's not a problem. And that's right this side.
It's the back, I mean, also I know it's. My people do like, definitely call the police, right, that's, that's the biggest thing to do for, to help us.
So we're not talking about light on the front at all, like her skiddings.
We're getting prices on both, right, I think we have.
Yeah, well, I told them right now just to work on.
The back portion, yeah.
Cause eventually I, I even like him on the plate, like the pavilion into the playground, cause that's where we have all our manholes.
Right.
It's the problem, there's so many kids in our neighborhood, like they destroy things.
Well, I guess the issue to me too is we think too, and that may be a question for the PDs, or maybe address a little bigger, well, yeah, right now it's the second, but you know, what. Does that, you know, is that going to affect vandalism, is that gonna change? Anything that's lit, I guess in this back area, right, and the, the pavilion and the playground area too. Um, and we close at, what, ten thirty, we close parks?
That was my question, why does that lot close at ten thirty?
That's across the board.
At dark, you're not supposed to. River side, river side used to stay open, so like.
Can we close them at dusk?
Can people still go back there for less than? We walk around.
Yeah, I mean. But you wouldn't be able to park, you wouldn't be able to drive back there, which might stop kids, some, somebody from going back there.
We did it at four rooms, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Kids doing donuts and cars, so.
I think if it closes at dusk.
That's what I'm gonna consider too, changing the timings of our.
Yeah, all the county forest preserves are dusted on.
Right.
Um, it, it's a, it's a step in the right direction.
That's what I'm saying.
I do know there are a lot of people like to go out there and fish, you know, I'm at, I, I, you know, I wouldn't want, and, and they don't cause problems. And they go down there, they fish, they keep themselves, um, but that would, it would help, we can get those cases closed a little bit sooner.
That's right.
I think it's always been a policy decision before, I mean, I think we've had, we brought this up before. Yeah, it is, it's a policy by the board, we've had discussions before about the times and. We can just have a discussion, you know, you know, later on, just, you know, if you want or so, whatever, we can bring this back up and talk about hours. You wanna talk about hours of parks, um, it's not something that can't be changed, it's just, you have to decide what you wanna do.
A wide swath ordinance or can we?
I think it's probably easier to have rail the same, just cause it's easier to enforce and advertise and publicize and let people know, here's my.
If it's easier for them and then get there by dark and make sure everyone's pleased out of there. So at least you can't drive a car back there.
So, I mean, we're gonna, Riverside won't be able to, right, does football go in?
They go, they go fast.
Riverside was always unique. The others were all blanketed pretty much, except for the bulk diamonds, they were obviously a little bit different, but. The rest of the other parks were pretty much the same, except for Riverside, we always had Riverside being a little different for the fishing. But we never really had the problems down there, cause there's not much down there.
Yeah.
Vandalism was.
We're gonna go next meeting, or we're gonna wait?
The next. Figure out times. That's a hard thing to say.
Yeah, I think that's a good step, and.
Just need to figure out what parks need what, I think it's just the three that it can't do. Don't do those.
Bring that back to your future. All right, just uh any other? Question from that, anyways, we'll bring it back to. Actually talk just about all over about park hours too. Um that's all we have on the agenda, public comments, is there any?
It's your chance.
Oh, sure, so tomorrow we have our next workshop for the five oh one C three Main Street, uh five was. Business Alliance for Pride, Rosco, uh Business Alliance, Finish and Alliance. Um so we'll have you playing that, tomorrow's really workshops, we had the first presentation, I think, April sixteen, November last, March sixteen. A month ago, um that was just going over it, we invited a lot of businesses to it, so here's what we're trying to do, here's the overall big picture of Main Street and we want to see this business alliance speed. Tomorrow is the actual working meeting, so tomorrow we're getting people who are actually interested in really helping and joining that committee and really setting it up and sort of hopefully eventually taking it away from the village and. Getting their process going. Um that will be tomorrow at four o'clock. Um so that's sort of exciting, that'll be the sort of the first actual working meeting of that, and hopefully come out of that with a. Sort of vision and actual plan where, you know, how are we gonna get this put into place and get started in things? So that's this, tomorrow's meeting, four o'clock, um you know, any business members or people would like to participate?
What's your, what's it look like right now?
Um probably ten, fifteen people, probably what we're hoping to have, um. Uh yeah, I think we had more than that at the initial one, um. You know, some artists have come back, I think, uh I was gonna say and talk to all the people who were at the last meeting. We think we should have a pretty decent turnout, hoping for maybe ten people is ideal, ten, fifteen people could ideally like working member.
No, um. It's a busy week for everyone and the response, what I did learn is that uh the letters got lost in the mail. And that phone call was far more effective than the letters. And people had put wrong email addresses down. But all of those people that I spoke to, if they couldn't come, they still expressed enthusiasm and wanted to stay in the loop and be involved, or they could come at the next time. So a- as Joe said, I think we have a a firm commitment. For between, uh I would say eight and twelve people, because some of them were going to um after-school. Activities of their kids that had been rescheduled, whether that was unknown, and they had said yes, or so on and so forth. So people are juggling things and uh they're still enthusiastic about it, so if you can join. Uh come to meet these people uh for encouragement. Also, uh trustee Wright has secured uh Mr. Packard. To open up the session and give a brief overview of how successful it was rolled out. In the Lloyd and kind of rally the troops, cheerleaders in charge, we'll call him. So um I hope that it is successful.
Location.
Here. Here, this room, four hot.
Question about the transition for next, next week, how's that work proceeding in that, I just got a question, do we know what's ahead on the village board, the next?
Uh next, we, yeah, I think what we, as we talked about, weeks ago, I think we'll have, it'll be essentially a two-part board meeting, so we'll have. This current board, all of you, will be starting off the meeting, we'll close out any uh ending business minutes, I mean, sort of, I think there's a couple items that we were gonna bring back, just to finalize that you had been working on, probably the one Simon tonight, honestly. Um on the board of the jungle tonight, or the committee jungle tonight. Um bring those back, it was approved by the current board, who's aware of all the information, you've been hearing those. Um at that point, we'll uh adjourn C T A and you will. Have a new board, we'll say thank you to the current board members that we have, um outgoing board members and clerk. Um sorry about that, and we'll have a new board this morning at that point and start the new session, talk about village board.
And also.
And you have computers throughout the background.
Our our clerk has made arrangements to meet with the incoming clerk.
Oh, yeah, we're, I'm training her on Thursday.
Um also.
We appreciate that, thank you.
If there's any, uh talk to some people about trustees already about this, but there's any uh training items you would like, that you think would be particularly helpful, I suppose you guys are here too. Just, if there's any items that you think would be particularly helpful for the new board and for you, all everybody, we'll do some, we'll do some initial training. Um just to keep up to speed on codes and how the village works, the operations. Um please let me know and we'll make sure to get that sort of put together and get those documents, everybody and get those trainings scheduled.
Let's just make sure that they're fine.
Got their five inch, five inch, how prepared?
Computer.
Any of yours? So, all right, and that, I guess at the point, sorry, uh motion to adjourn.
Some of us.
All in favor?
I oppose.
Your turn at eight twelve.
It's locked enough.
It's another hour. It's in sunshine, yeah.